All right. Okay, let's get this show on the road. I'm Phil's more comfortable with the gavel than I am. We're gonna get going here. So roll call. We have Michael Costello, Judson McIntosh, John Beckett, Robert Bear and Krista Switzer in attendance. Need a motion, right? To we good with roll call then we go. It's not to the acceptance of the agenda that we. Yep. So we'll move to the second item of the agenda, acceptance of the agenda. Can we get a motion?
Then we accept the agenda.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
For the acceptance of the agenda, Krista Switzer. Bob Bear.
As a reminder, when you speak, you've got to turn your microphones on because I can't hear you out here in Zoom land.
John Beckett. John McIntosh.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
That's five for none opposed.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to item number three in the agenda, approval of the minutes from the April nineteen twenty twenty-three meeting. Oh, Lisa. How do we rectify this? Do we need to amend the roll call with Lisa?
Um, I don't think so. I think we can just acknowledge that Lisa was here.
Lisa Buck is in attendance. Boom. Item number three, approval of the minutes of April nineteen twenty twenty-three. Any?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. I wasn't either. Right?
For the approve. Gosh, sorry, for the approval of the minutes for the April planning board, Krista Switzer.
Approved.
Bob Bear.
Yes.
John Beckett.
Approved.
And Mr. McIntosh is abstaining. Lisa Buck is abstaining. Michael Costello.
Approved.
That's four for approval, none opposed. With two abstaining.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, now on to item four, new business. Uh, item A, a proposed amendment to section eighteen dash one oh six of the land use ordinance schedule of uses to reduce the minimum lot area requirement in the commercial two district from forty thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet, based on the recommendation of the towns in the towns comprehensive plan. Kyle, do you want to give us the rundown?
Sure. Um, so as the, the report mentioned, the, uh, the comp plan made a few recommendations around ordinance amendments specifically to address the commercial two districts, mainly in the Park Street area. The commercial two district in town has a few other locations along Main Street where you see a few lots designated as C two. Um, the intersection at Forest and Essex is actually also zoned as C two, kind of surrounded by the agriculture district. But the primary area in town where you'll find the, the C two district is that corridor on Park Street. Um, you know, around the roundabout and then, you know, going towards the town line, towards the reserve. Um, and the whole real point of this is that the, the intent behind the C two district, you know, going back before the, the last iteration of the con plan even was that it was supposed to be a, a mixed use district. You know, meaning it has residential uses, commercial uses. You're kind of sandwiched between the downtown and the university, so it should be a fairly walkable and easily, easy to navigate corridor. Um, however, the minimum lot area, you know, so the, the amount of land you need to create a legal lot in that district as of now is forty thousand square feet, which is really just not conducive to that sort of walkable, compact environment when you're talking about, you know, smaller scale residential and commercial uses, you know, thinking retail service businesses, restaurants, cafes, you know, small offices. Um, the ability for people to easily walk or bike or transit between, you know, multiple different lots along that corridor. Um, forty thousand square feet is nearly an acre. So that's the same minimum lot size that we have in our commercial one district in our economic development zone district, where you're a lot more likely to find large scale commercial to industrial uses, more manufacturing, larger office buildings, things like that. Um, so it, it's not that, you know, making this recommendation towards smaller lot area requirements. It's not that you, you wouldn't be able to have those larger lots still if something came along, you know? Someone wants to put in a grocery store or a larger office building or something like that. Or, you know, we have a lot of the cluster developments on Park Street that are multi acre lots. Um, but it means that some of those smaller lots on the corridor um, would have more flexible development opportunity. So when we're trying to add more commercial space in town, um, we're trying to add more housing opportunities. This is something that would allow more flexibility while kind of still maintaining the overall scale as to not entirely change that corridor. You know, we're not switching to the same density that the downtown has. So you're creating an entirely separate downtown area. You're still happily, um, kind of in the middle of that larger scale commercial zoning district lot size. And the more dense areas of town like the downtown or our high density residential district. Um, yeah, that, that pretty much sums up where the, the con plan recommendation was coming from. Um, council referred the, uh, the amendment to the planning board for its public hearing. Um, so yeah, uh, open to any discussion or questions board members might have.
Uh, so I think this is a good move. Um, I was part of that comprehensive plan. Uh, maybe ten years ago now, I can't remember how long ago it was, but yeah, I think, um, closer to town, allowing more dense, um, uh, development makes a lot of sense, so I'm in favor.
I'm in favor of it, makes good sense to me.
Was on Camp Comp Committee as well, and I think it made for a good sense.
Just out of curiosity, um, that cop plant was a long time ago, and I just wonder why it took so long for this to come up.
Uh, so I think that it was addressed sort of in twenty sixteen or seventeen. So if you notice on the ordinance amendment, you'll see in the line for minimum lot area per family, there is a number there that's fifteen thousand square feet. So that was added after the con plan came out, like a few years within the con plan coming out. Um, and I, I think the idea was that you could keep the forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, but you could allow a few more things to happen on one of those lots. So you would still need the forty thousand square foot lot, but with the fifteen thousand uh, minimum lot area requirement per family, which is means per dwelling unit. It means you could stick a two family home on a lot that size. But you would still need that forty thousand square foot lot. So you still, it, it still eliminates some of that flexibility that we're talking about now. Um, so I, I'm not a hundred percent sure why that wasn't addressed then. Um, I, I know that amendment at the time started out that way to bring it down and then looking through different drafts. It was sort of switched and they landed on that. But taking another look on it, you know, you're right, you know, we're about to start looking at a new con plan coming up in the next, you know, year or two. Um, this is sort of one of the low hanging fruit items. That's kind of a simple change that was just left over and haven't, hasn't been done yet.
I think to add a little context too, that was before those large apartment complexes came in over there. And that's kind of now turned into a student housing area. I'm gonna use my words carefully here, but, um, and so it could be that there was some attempt initially to try to, you know, minimize that, but now I don't think that.
Yeah, I, I think too, then even, I mean, even ten years ago, when the con plan was done, the conversations around, you know, the conversations were similar, you know, we need to provide more housing opportunities. We need to provide more mixed use, you know, we need to provide smaller lot sizes to promote walkability and those sorts of things. It was the same conversations, but I don't think there was nearly as much um, kind of urgency around it, whereas now, you know, we're, we're getting, you know, legislation from the state coming out to, you know, require, you know, basically density enhancements to create more housing opportunities. So I, I think there were smaller steps taken to see, you know, what kind of incremental approaches could start to really pick up and add more development options. Um, and, you know, over the years, you know, you see some small changes or maybe you don't see anything at all. And, you know, so we kind of have to take the next step to promote some of that growth.
I'm in favor of it.
I was not on that comprehensive committee, but I attended a lot of the work sessions, the public sessions, and there was just a whole lot going on, so that you could only address so much at, at that time in the amount of allotment, you know, to keep people engaged, but I have no problem with that either.
Uh, so, uh, do we need a public comment?
Yeah, so, yeah, um, the, it is referred to the planning board. Part of that is to have the public hearing, so.
Any other comments before we open it up for? Everybody? All right, now we're open for public comment if anyone would like to.
I'm Glenn Kaler. I have a rental house at five oh six Main Street, which is C two, but it's down near the VZ line. And maybe I shouldn't say anything if you guys are gonna do this, because I came here because I want to see it happen. But it sounds to me like what I want is already in, in effect, because I have sixty-three thousand square feet. And I know Evan Ricker, he was, you know, part of that plan and everything, and he said, yeah, we're gonna take it down to twenty thousand square feet. So I said, great, because at sixty-three, when it was forty, I couldn't. I've got a four bedroom, three bath house. And if I put on a couple rooms, I can split it into two units and it just helps me out rental wise. Getting four people into a unit is a little more complicated than threes and twos. And the house is already registered for five people, so it's not like I'm even adding that much, you know, space. But I thought I was stuck on the forty thousand square foot thing, because I got sixty-three and it said you need forty per unit, and I think I even checked that a couple of years ago, but I guess I missed the fine print about this family dwelling rule.
So, um, you, you were correct. So the difference is, is that the, the Park Street corridor where the C two is, is on public water and sewer. So that minimum lot size per dwelling number is fifteen thousand square feet there. In your situation right now, I, you have well and septic.
I'm on city water, but I'm on septic. So I'd love to get on city sewer, please do that, but.
So right now for, well, if you're on one of each, right now, the requirement is thirty thousand square feet.
Well, I can make it then, you know.
Yeah, so you should have been able to. I imagine the assumption at the time might have been that you had both well and septic, because then it's forty thousand square feet per dwelling.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, this change actually would make it twenty thousand square feet per dwelling, regardless if you were on well and septic as well. Um, and state law has changed where the minimum lot size with the state for septic is twenty thousand square feet. So this sort of reflects that showing. So, um, yeah, you probably would be eligible for that two family home, so.
Go, if that's the case, I'd actually vote against it, because I want to keep it rural down there and keep it, keep the space. I don't want people building all over me, but, um, I guess I'll take the good, just I can do what I wanted to do for the last ten years, so. That's all I wanted, so. But yeah, there, well, while I got your rapt attention, is there any chance of sewer going down there and neck and dang up with VZ and making one big?
We, we don't, we don't know anything about that.
Okay.
We're the planning board, we're not, um, the development. I don't know if Kyle, you want to address it, but the planning board certainly does know.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing concrete going on, but I mean, I'm happy to, you know, talk about stuff like that, you know, outside of the, the planning board meeting. If you want to give a call sometime, so.
Well, I appreciate your service, this kind of stuff is, I don't know, maybe you enjoy it, I find it painful. Thanks for your.
Thank you. Uh, all right, anyone else?
There's nobody online at this time.
Thank you, Bill. All right, I'm gonna close the public comment. Um, at this point, what we want is really a recommendation to the board of up or down, right?
Yeah, just the, yeah, a motion to whether.
Recommend approval or, yep. So can I get a motion?
I move that we recommend approval of a change in lot size from forty thousand to twenty thousand in the C two district. Square feet, I should say.
I can second that.
All right, let's vote.
To recommend the proposed amendment to council, Krista Switzer.
Approved.
Bob Bear.
Approved.
John Beckett. Dud McIntosh. Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
That's six for approval, none opposed.
All right, thank you. On to, uh, new business item B, a minor site plan review application by Michael Burns located on ninety-five and ninety-five, excuse me, ninety-one and ninety-five or no Landing Road, tax map fifteen dash two lots forty-one and forty-two. In the FNA district, the application proposes to use each of the single family homes as a home stay two, also referred to as a non owner occupied short term rental. Kyle, you want to give us the, uh, app first, okay, applicant first? Could you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Um, yes, I'm Michael Burns, owner of ninety-one, ninety-five, or no Landing Road, and I am proposing to use these single family residences as short term rentals. They've obviously filled out the application and I believe submitted the appropriate documentation, um, for everyone's review.
Thank you. She has a bottle of water. Um, are there any questions from the board of the applicant? Yep.
Um, yeah, so as, uh, Michael stated, you know, the proposed use here is to, uh, well, what we classify in the ordinance is home stay twos, maybe more commonly referred to as short term rentals. Um, the reason these are coming to the planning board for review and not a permit through the code enforcement officer is because they're non owner occupied. Um, when we were, um, moving through adopting that ordinance, part of that was that non owner occupied short term rentals and more residential, you know, uh, focused zones, uh, would come to the planning board and receive that same sort of review process that we have for things like home businesses. So, you know, this is a situation where it's, you know, it, it's happening in a residential structure. Um, you know, you're maintaining a lot of that, that residential level kind of character to the use going on, but there's some sort of commercial element to it, um, that could potentially extend beyond, you know, what you'd find in a, you know, more of a long term permanent residence in a single family home. Um, so, uh, uh, you know, just to touch on a few things, you know, we're in the forest and agriculture district here, uh, where the lot size, you know, is, you know, typically now a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. So, you know, it's also in the shoreline zone, the limited residential shoreline. Um, as I mentioned in the report, a lot of the lots, most of them located on the lake are considered to be legally non conforming. Um, almost all of them don't meet those dimensional requirements, you know, that you'll find now in our forest and agriculture district. Um, but since there's no real changes happening here, there's no expansions of any structures, there's no um, new impervious going in, there's no clearing of vegetation. Um, and the use is happening, you know, solely inside the single family homes. Um, there's not really a, a lot there to consider that non conformity doesn't really come into play. Uh, it's an allowed use in that district. Uh, you know, one of the things I, you know, note in the, the report is that one of the requirements, uh, for the non owner occupied short term rentals specifically, um, to kind of coincide with our rental registration for long term rentals is that, you know, when we have a property owner looking to do something like this and they live over an hour away from the town, um, they're required to have a local agent, property manager, um, to be able to respond in a sort of efficient and timely manner. Um, the applicant provided that information in the application, so that's, you know, sort of one of the, the bigger things that we're considering here as, um, you know, that helps to address some of the noise or behavioral concerns that we hear sometimes around, um, you know, these sorts of things. Um, lighting, I think, you know, the applicant mentioned some lighting off the garage directed towards the driveway and house. Um, the only real abudders here are across the street, um, you know, to the west and north. You're pretty much surrounded by the lake, to the east is a, um, like a vacant piece of land that's, you know, a lot partially land, partially underwater. Um, so there isn't a whole lot of proximity to, to neighbors here, especially with the houses set back on the lots. Um, you know, eighty plus feet here. Um, so there's not a lot of concern around, um, noise or lighting there. Uh, from staff's point of view, both lots take advantage of well and septic, spoke with code enforcement. You know, they've been utilized for single family home use in the past. So switching over to that short term rental, while it's a different type of use of the single family homes, the, the capacity of that doesn't really come into question. It's still kind of the same level of use for those. Um, parking is one of the other things that, you know, standards that comes up when we review these sorts of things under the ordinance. App can mention that each driveway can fit around six cars. There's actually a standard in our ordinance for home occupations that they can't utilize more than four off street parking spaces. That's to kind of maintain that residential character in the neighborhood, so you're not loading in a whole parking lot full of cars and kind of turning it into a more commercial space. Um, so we just recommended that that be identified as a condition of approval, that even though there's room for six, that um, not more than four vehicles as part of the short term rental could be parked on either lot at any one given time. Um, yeah, so with that being said, I think that's pretty much everything. Um, you know, the way sort of set this up, it's a little bit unique because it's technically two separate lots, so, um, you know, I think it makes sense to review all of this at one time and have the public hearing all at once, since they're abutting lots with the same owner. Um, but when the time comes for the board to, to make a decision and findings, um, we should really break that into two separate, um, findings.
Separate motions.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Happy to answer any questions.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
If there's no questions, can I get, we'll need two separate motions, one for each address.
Uh, open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, yes.
I have just one thing to, um, consider in the, uh, recommendations, one through three, number two. Um, it says no more than four off street parking places that shall be utilized by the renters at any given time. And the, um, application does say that there will be no, um, on street parking. But it seems to me that this condition should also mention no on street parking, just to make sure.
So.
That everybody knows this is part of the deal.
Yes, I don't, the ordinance doesn't, the home occupation ordinance we have doesn't specify anything about on street parking. So I'm not sure that that's something the planning board can require. Um, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, the, the ordinance, you know, I mean, it talks about right, not having more than four off street parking spaces required, and that's pretty clearly to limit the amount of traffic piling into any one lot or neighborhood at a, a given time. But it doesn't have that same, it, it very clearly doesn't say that there's a requirement for on street parking for the home business, that there's some limit on that. Um, now, if, I mean, if the applicant has kind of stated that it's not going to, there is going to be no utilized on street parking. Um, you know, I, I think the board could, you know, probably make that recommendation, but I would just, you know, so we consider it in the future if this comes up. It's not, I, it's not actually a requirement of the ordinance that a home business or home stay or any type of home occupation doesn't use on street parking at all, if it's available. But maybe something we would need to look at going forward.
If we can't do that, we can't do it.
I think you're implying it's not legally enforceable, is what you're saying. You sounded like you were kind of walking around.
We don't have jurisdiction over that.
Yeah, I'm.
A homeowner couldn't, you, you could assume that the cars on the street belong to a certain house, but you, that's not necessarily always the case. Those cars could have parked from anywhere.
Right, right. And, yeah, so I, I mean, I think that, right, I mean, if the property manager comes or something could park in the street or, um, yeah, I, I, I don't really know a way around that, you know, other than, you know, I mean, if, if people, if, if there is on street parking allowed, and the ordinance doesn't require any sort of limit on, on street parking, I, I'm not sure how the, the board would make that recommendation.
Understood, and it sounds like you're, you're good, Krista.
It sounds like we have to stay away from that, and we may want to look at it.
Yeah.
More generally sometime.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's definitely something worth taking a look at.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public? All right. Public, uh, comment is open.
There are no hands raised online.
We need to wait for a certain period of time or?
I think Phil usually waits. Yeah. Ten, fifteen seconds.
Public comment is closed. All right. Um, any more discussion before the questions? So, um, we need two separate motions, one for ninety-five, one for ninety, uh, ninety-one and one for ninety-five. And I get first motion.
I move that we allow a minor site plan review on lot number ninety-one, uh, or no Landing Road tax map fifteen dash two. Um, I guess I gave you the address and not the lot number. Um, anyway, in the forest and agricultural district, uh, to, um, allow a home stay type two, um, use. Yeah, do you want me to read those now?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, all right. Um, that dwelling shall be only rented to up to three unrelated persons at any given time, so as to meet the ordinance requirement for occupancy for any dwelling unit, that no more than four off street parking spaces shall be utilized in the property by renters at any given time, and that the applicant will obtain a use permit from the code enforcement officer for the home stay.
You need a second before I read this, right? Can I get a second?
Second.
And do I need to read this twice, once for each one of them?
Fortunately.
Kyle. Okay. Um, this is a proposed finding of fact. For H two oh seven. for H two oh seven vacations LLC, Michael Burns, site plan review, May seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Pursuant to article, article six, section eighteen dash one seventy-seven of the Orno Code of Ordinances, the Orno Planning Board has considered the application of H two oh seven vacations LLC, by Michael Burns, for a home stay two located at ninety-one Orno Landing Road, tax map fifteen dash two lot forty-one in the FNA and Limited Residential Shoreland District. And based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town departments, and the public, found the following. Are we gonna vote after each one of these, or just a simple pause and?
So Phil has, I, I think, in reading through all of it.
Yep.
And if people have comments.
Then ask them for objections.
Jump in, but yeah, it's more at the end.
Yep, okay. Uh, item one, requirements of the district, that the proposed use is allowable in the FNA district as well as the limited residential shoreline district, and that as the proposed change of use does not involve any new exterior construction or changes to the site, that there will be no changes to any dimensional aspects of the site building, including setbacks, lot coverage, lot size, or lot frontage. Item two, compliance with the town ordinances and codes, that the proposed use meets the provisions of applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections of chapter eighteen, the land use ordinance. Item three, utilization of the site. The proposed change of use will not involve any structural additions or expansions of impervious services, and the use will take place in the existing single-family dwelling located on the site. Item number, and number four, traffic and pedestrian access, that the use proposes to utilize the existing single-family dwelling for the purpose of a short, for, of a short-term rental for people vacationing, visiting the university or traveling for work, and therefore, traffic is anticipated to be consistent with that of a residential neighborhood. In addition, the site provides adequate space for off-street parking, so that renters can park all vehicles off-street. Item number five, storage of materials, that there will be no exposed storage of materials. Item number six, water supply and sewage disposal, that the site is currently served by onsite well and septic, and no changes to capacity are anticipated as a result of the short-term rental use. Item seven, utilities, that the proposed change of use does not require any changes to the existing utilities. Item number eight, solid waste management, that the applicant has stated trash will be collected by a third party from a small dumpster located at night on ninety-five Orno Landing Road, which is the abutting property also owned by the applicant. Item number nine, noise, that the proposed use will comply with the sound level limits identified in chapter thirteen of the ordinance. And item number ten, other review criteria, that the, that due to the proposed use not involving any expansion of the structure or impervious changes to the site, that other site plan review criteria typically reviewed related to items such as stormwater management, erosion control, natural features, hazardous materials, and water quality are not applicable to the proposed project. Comments or objections?
Uh, question, um, number five, what does that mean? Storage of materials, what, what are we talking about in terms of materials?
So that would be storage of materials, like if there was a, a business or something. So let's say there was some sort of, you know, home workshop, which was a woodworking shop or something. Um, you know, you're not just permanently leaving all of your equipment and lumber in the middle of the front yard or something like that.
You can still have a wood pile.
Yeah, yeah, it would, this, it wouldn't apply to, like, your more kind of accessory residential things like that.
Thank you.
Any other? All right, we can vote.
For the approval of the minor site plan application for Orno Landing Road number ninety-one, Krista Switzer. Bob Bear.
Approve.
John Beckett.
Approve.
Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approve.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
That's six for approval, none opposed.
Thank you, Jessica, uh, so could I get a second motion for ninety-five Orno Landing?
I move that we approve a minor site plan review application by Michael Burns, located at ninety-five Orno Landing Road, tax map fifteen dash two, lot forty-two in the Forest and Agriculture District, with the following recommendations, that the dwelling can only be rented up to three unrelated persons at any given time. No more than four off-street parking spaces shall be utilized by the renters at any given time. And also, the applicant will obtain a use permit from the code enforcement officer for the home stay business.
Need a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, let's read in the proposed finding of fact, uh, H two oh seven vacations LLC, Michael Burns, site plan review, May seventeen, twenty twenty-three, or ninety-five Orno Landing. Uh, pursuant to article six, section eighteen dash one seventy-seven of the Orno Code of Ordinances, the Orno Planning Board has considered the application of H two oh seven vacations LLC, Michael Burns, for home stay two located ninety-five Orno Landing Road, tax map fifteen dash two lot forty-two in the FNA and Limited Residential Shoreland District, and based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town departments, and public, found the following. Item one, requirements of the district, that the proposed use is allowable in the FNA district as well as the limited residential shoreline district, and that as the proposed change of use does not involve any exterior construction or changes to the site, that there will be no changes to any dimensional aspects on the site, including setbacks, lot coverage, lot size, or lot frontage. Item two, compliance with town ordinances and codes, the proposed use meets the provisions of applicable regu- regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections of chapter eighteen, land use ordinance. Item three, utilization of the site, that the proposed change of use will not involve any structural additions or expansions of impervious surfaces, and the use will take place in the existing single-family dwelling located on the site. Item four, traffic and pedestrian access, that the use proposes to utilize the existing single-family dwelling for the purpose of a short-term rental for people vacationing, visiting the university or traveling for work, and therefore, traffic is anticipated to be consistent with that of a residential neighborhood. In addition, the site provides adequate space for off-street parking, so that renters can park all vehicles off-street. Item five, storage of materials, there will be no exposed storage of materials. Item six, water supply and sewage disposal, that the site is currently served by an onsite well and septic, and no changes to capacity are anticipated as a, as a result of the short-term rental use. Item seven, utilities, that the proposed change of use does not require any changes to existing utilities. Item eight, solid waste management, that the applicant has proposed a third-party trash removal and small, and a small dumpster between the house and garage to manage solid waste. Item number nine, noise, the, the, that the proposed use will comply with the sound level limits identified in chapter thirteen of the ordinance. And item number ten, other review criteria, that due to the proposed use not involving any expansion of the structure or previous changes to the site, that other site plan review criteria typically reviewed related to items such as stormwater management, erosion control, natural features, hazardous materials, and water quality are not applicable to the proposed project. Questions? Jessica.
For the approval of the minor site plan review application for ninety-five Orno Landing Road, Krista Switzer.
Approve.
Bob Bear.
Approve.
John Beckett.
Approve.
Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approve.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
That's six for approval, none opposed.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, that's the last item on our new business, on to item five, discussion. Discuss, Kyle?
No discussion, really, nothing major happening. I'm trying to think if, we don't have anything for June as of yet. Um, it's one of those meetings, the way the months fall, we still have a little time before the application deadline, so, um, we'll be in touch if anything gets in, and we're having a meeting, but potentially no meeting.
Thank you, Kyle. All right, uh, item number six, adjournment, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Vote to adjourn, right?
For adjournment of the May planning board meeting, Krista Switzer.
Yes.
Bob Bear. Judd, uh, John Beckett.
Yes.
Judd McIntosh.
Yes.
Lisa Buck.
Absolutely.
Michael Costello.
Yes.
That's six for adjournment, none opposed.
Thank you, and good night.